Well, it's 6:30, so I think we'll go ahead and get started. I know Cynthia's here. Oh, there she is. Thank you all for coming out on tonight. And a special thank you to all of your spouses, significant others, kids and grandkids, who have given up their Valentine's evening to allow you to come here. So, thank you all, or parents, I should say, having in your case. But no, that's a sacrifice that unfortunately families make sometimes. So, thank you all. And we will start with the call to order and the Pledge of Allegiance. And the flag is right in the back there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you all hear me okay back there? It just sounds funny tonight for some reason, so thank you. Dr. Brenner, do you have any additions or corrections to the agenda at all?
I do not, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion and a second? We have a motion by Mr. Douthat. Do we have a second? We have a second by Bill Pomassino. Any questions, thoughts about the agenda? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on to item three, which is celebrating success, Wilder Elementary School. And Leslie, you're here. You get to take it over and run the show. Thank you.
Members of the school board, Dr. Brenner, Ms. Galach, Dr. Lewis, thank you so much for this opportunity to share part of Wilder's story with you for this celebrating success. I am Leslie Wiggent, principal of Wilder Elementary School, and I'm very proud to have three teachers with who will really tell the bulk of the story that we want to share tonight. Wilder has a house system, which has been our school-wide positive behavior intervention system for the last four years. And really, it's been so much more than that for our school. It's how we as a system promote positive relationships and promote positive behaviors. It's important to me to note that the house system is a product of Wilder teachers and staff who really have a commitment. Three of them are here. They're part of a group of six that really lead this effort in our building, but they have the support of every staff member in our building to carry out the work of the house system. So, I'm very proud of them for that. And really, our goal is to create a culture of connection and belonging in our school. And you might go, well, gosh, you're a small school. How could that not happen? But honestly, it does take intention to make that happen. We want to foster relationships across grade levels, K through five, and relationships with students with a variety of adults beyond their classroom teacher or a few other teachers they might see throughout the day. We weave in character traits and many aspects of social-emotional learning along the way. And really, it becomes part of our school-wide language, which is a big plus. We started the house system in 2018-19, and it has been improved upon. As I said, this is our fourth year. But as you know, during those four years, we had distance learning and we had pandemic protocols, which lend themselves to distancing rather than connecting. So, our staff had great challenges in continuing the house system in those situations, yet they did an amazing job at that. And I'm happy that they're going to share a little bit about that as well. As I said, I have a lot of gratitude for our house advisory group. Three of those six members are here, all helped with the presentation you're going to see. I'll ask them to introduce themselves as they make their presentation. And then when they're finished, we have a short video to kind of show some highlights of the last four years of the house system at Wilder. And after that, we will be happy to answer any questions that you might have for us. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Bozeman. I am the kindergarten teacher at Wilder. And I'm going to start by talking about kind of what the house system is. It's going to be hard for me, I was talking about, because I want to elaborate on everything, but that's kind of what they're here for too. So, I'm just going to kind of introduce what the house system is at Wilder. It is a school within a school model, so meaning all of our students and staff are sorted into smaller houses. And what's really important about that is it's mixed grade levels and mixed adults. So that in my house, I'm in the red caring house. So, it's caring, but it's represented by red, so that's what I'm wearing today. We have a variety of kids in our house from K through five and multiple adults from other areas of the school. Students meet with their houses regularly for team building. We are so lucky that Leslie has been just so on board with us. We have been, we started this when we did a book study a couple of years ago on The Wild Card by Wade and Hope King, if you're familiar, and the Ron Clark Academy. And when we brought this idea to Leslie, she has made it a priority at our school. So, our house meetings happen once a week for a half hour where we do meet with our houses. Of course, it's changed a little bit with COVID, but it is very exciting. We have started that back up. And then another part of our house system is students will earn points to work toward becoming the house champion. So, that is a very big deal at our school. We, I'm, you know, team red one today, so it's very exciting for us. Here are the goals for the house system. Community, relationships, excitement, pride, and connection. And a lot of those words, when you look at them, really go together. And it's been really easy for us to use those as our goals, because it is very important to all of us at our school with all those goals. So, I'm going to let my other colleagues elaborate a little more on our house system.
I'm Brandon Bowman. I'm the fifth grade teacher over at Wilder. We have just a nice picture of our staff here. Our motto the last four years has been where you belong. So, we want every student and staff and parent in our community to feel like they belong to our school. And so, that's kind of just been our motto the last few years. Few different things to go with our house system. So, first off, how we, or why we decided to start it. Back when we were getting certified for HRS Level One, we were looking at, do all of our students in our building have multiple adults that they feel that they could trust? And we took a survey of all, every student in the school took a survey. And we found that there were handfuls of students that either had one or no adults that they felt comfortable with in our building. And we wanted to try to figure out a way that we could change that, and that's where this house system came from. We wanted them to interact with more students outside of their classroom and more adults outside of the students that they, or the teachers that they see each day, so that they are more likely to build that connection with somebody in our building that they would feel comfortable with. We differentiate our lessons. So, as Lori here will talk about in a few minutes, we started off in mixed houses with cross-grade levels, and we would do lessons that were appropriate K through five to learn different skills, different things that we felt students at Wilder needed help with or practice with. We also have connected it to social-emotional learning, which I'll talk about here in just a second. And then as the pandemic hit, we had to meet with just our classes. So, we were still trying to come up with activities that would be helpful for kindergarten and through fifth grade, that would create a common language. So, an example here in the month of January, we talked about voice levels. So, at the end of the month of January, our plan was for you to be able to go to any student at Wilder and ask them, what is an appropriate voice level in a certain situation? And they would be able to answer that, so that every teacher, every student is hearing that same language and able to make that connection. We also are connecting it to SEL. So, example, for the month of February, we're talking about self-love, self-awareness, self-management, the things that, the strengths that a student has in themselves, so they can build that positive image of themselves. Other things that we have done in the past is we do get-to-know-you activities, so getting that comfort feeling with other staff and other students. And during distance learning, we also did some letters to our distance learners, the students that were out of the building, so that they could still try and feel connected to Wilder, even though they weren't necessarily in the building. Here's just an example. So, we meet on Mondays at 2:30 in the afternoon. So, everyone starts at the same time, so everyone's getting the message at the same time, and everyone is a part of it. And then I have a schedule here for kind of what we have done each of the various months. So, we did some digital citizenship things earlier in the year, problem solving, voice levels, we are all special, celebrating differences, growth mindset. And then on those community ones and the house introduction in September, our group does that, and we like to do fun games and kind of fun activities throughout the month. So, that's kind of our overview of what the house system looks like for us.
Hi, I'm Lori Scadam. I am the speech-language pathologist at Wilder. All right. So, up here is an example of the house poster that is in each classroom at Wilder. And so, like Katie Bozeman mentioned, red was crowned our house champion this week. So, points are awarded for meeting or exceeding those expectations, those things that we talk about to students. Those are awarded throughout the week to each house. Points cannot be taken away, so it's not a punitive thing. And then at the end of the week, the points are added up for each house, and then that house leader is announced on Monday before the house meeting. And then at the end of the year, we will award an overall house champion. And we have not been able to do that yet, so we are excited to do that this year. So, some of the ways that we are celebrating, we do have our Wilder Way slip. So, we're really trying to recognize those positive behaviors in students and just recognizing and acknowledging that individual success. Our fifth-grade student leaders have also taken on the responsibility of running our Wilder Way store. So, this is kind of just something that they really do independently with just a little bit of guidance and support from Mr. Bowman and Mrs. Wiggent. And so, they lead this on Friday afternoons, and students come down with their slips and can pick out some things from the Wilder Way store. Obviously, we've had to change a lot of things due to COVID. But prior to COVID, we had a lot of school-wide assemblies, like Mr. Bowman and Ms. Bozeman talked about. And you'll see in our video coming up, the "Don't Give Up on Me" song is one that we all sang together as a school. And we haven't been able to have a school assembly yet, so that has been played over the intercom as students walk into their house meeting. So, students are very familiar with this song. We are hoping to maybe be able to start assemblies once again, maybe on a smaller scale, to be able to do that. Prior to COVID, we also had house lunches, so students were able to sit together with their house and have a celebration. So, maybe we'll get to that point of being able to do that. If not this year, hopefully next year. And up until last week, like they mentioned, students were meeting just in their classroom. But last week, we did start to meet together again with our houses. And I can tell you that the energy and excitement of those students getting back together again after almost two years was just contagious. It was so awesome. And for somebody like me, who's a non-classroom teacher, to be able to make those connections with kids has just been amazing. And then I can see them in the hallway, can greet them, and they know who I am. And I'm another adult that they can have that connection with. So, throughout the years, we've obviously taken a lot of pictures and a lot of videos. So, that's something we really want to share with you next, just to, you know, we were able to talk about it, but we really want you to be able to see it and feel what it's like to be a part of our house system at Wilder. So, next we have a video that you'll see things, what things looked like prior to COVID, and then how we've had to adapt things a little bit because of COVID. So...
But if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address those at this time.
Questions for the Wilder team. Mr. Douthat.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, there's programs such as Olvea's and other things. It seems that this was grassroots within the building that came together by collaboration and work, correct?
Yes, this met the need that Olvea's asks us to do.
Okay, because it seems like, it seems very internal and very personal.
Yeah.
And I just, it's good, it's nice to see, and all adults, everybody has somebody. Good, it's awesome to see. Thank you, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead.
We had a presentation about this before COVID. And so, it's really fun to hear about how it's evolved through what might be considered a challenge or a barrier to kind of just say, it's one more thing we have to do, let's stop and do it. And it seems very much like you came through with an even bigger opportunity. So, it's kind of fun to see how it's evolved in utilizing the tools that we have through district programs, but kind of tailoring it to your school. So, it's really cool.
Any other questions, comments? No? Go ahead, Catherine.
Yeah, Leslie, I just remember when you and your team were just starting to talk about this and how far you've come, and it's just phenomenal. And we all know that relationships are the foundation for learning, and I just want to commend you on that. It made me want to jump into a classroom or into a house and see what's happening there. So, congratulations to y'all. Thanks for your work.
Mondays at 2:30. You're welcome. Come on over every Monday.
Well, thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the approval of the January 24th minutes. That's in your electronic pages two through four. Do I have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, do we have any, do we have a motion? We have a motion by Cynthia and a second by Bill. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on to item five, which is public comments. We have several speakers that would like to speak. If we can keep our talks to under three minutes, and public comments and concerns will be directed to the superintendent, who will deal with them according to policies adopted by the board. First citizen I have is David Waterman.
In the interest of time and to respect everyone's time, I just have a very quick question requires a yes or no answer. The COVID-19 update from the Grand Forks Public Schools dated January 14th states that masks will be required in classrooms and programs where we've been notified of an immunocompromised student or employee. Masks will also continue to be required in early childhood special education and Head Start programs if students are not eligible for vaccination. Is that still the case? Has that been changed?
Thank you for your comment. As you know, per our policy, we cannot respond tonight, but we will respond back to you. I'll have administration respond back to you.
Well, I'm not going to make any comments if this policy has been changed, but if this is still the standing policy of the school board, then that's what I'm here to make a comment about. So, I looked through your website. I wasn't able to find any update on this, but I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know. So, if you can just tell me if that's still the policy, then I'll continue.
I don't know, because it's not a school board policy. It's a school district policy. But you're, feel free, feel free to make your comments. That's what we're here for.
I know that this board has made decisions to keep children in masks in spite of information that we've brought to you showing that masks don't work. I'd like you to please listen very carefully. Did you hear that? Was that a gunshot or was that a balloon popping? Which was it? I know that you know, because you could see, but I don't think any of these folks over here could see. It could have been either one, couldn't it? So, if you all decided that you just heard a gunshot in this room, that would be a great cause for alarm, wouldn't it? And yet, on this side, because you know something that they don't know because of your vantage point, you wouldn't be alarmed. And so, a big division could break out right here in this room between the folks who say, there's nothing to worry about here, and the folks who say, we've got to do something because we're all in danger. We need to put up plexiglass, and we need to wear bulletproof things, and we need to have guards posted everywhere. And you could say, well, Dr. Brenner, you could say, well, you know, we've got two different positions, and we really don't, you know, they're equally valid, so we're just going to go with to be safe. We're going to do all this stuff. Everybody should wear three layers of clothing and a thick coat to protect yourself, just in case a gunman walks in here. Of course, that would be nonsense, because a coat wouldn't do anything, neither would plexiglass or viters, just like having children wear masks all day long in school, children who are not at risk of severe disease from COVID. children who are not at risk of severe disease from COVID. Only does great harm. It doesn't do any good. And so the question is, what's the truth about that sound that you just heard? Is there any evidence? Any gunpowder smell? Or is there a broken balloon somewhere here? The harm that's being done to these children isn't excusable. And the fact that the Head Start programs and the special ed programs are the ones where the kids have the least ability to bounce back from that, to not be able to see people's faces in their mouths as they're speaking. They're the ones at greatest risk. And the harm to the children is now quite evident, it should be, to anyone who's paying attention. That's on your heads. This is something that...
Please wrap it up. You passed your three minutes.
I'll wrap it up very quickly. I suspect that at some point, a doctor who is not scared, who hasn't taken the COVID cash, will be able to do an assessment of a child who's been injured by being forced to wear a mask all day long in school. And perhaps there will even be an attorney who will take on a case and be willing to sue individual members of this board for making those decisions and forcing that on those children. But whether that happens or not is kind of irrelevant, because ultimately, someday, each one of us, you all included, will stand before God to give an account for the things that you did here. I'll thank you for not interrupting while I read this brief statement made by Jesus. "At that time, the disciples came to Jesus and said, 'Who then is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven?' And he called the child to himself and set him before them and said, 'Truly I say to you, unless you are converted and become like children, you will not enter the kingdom of heaven.' Whoever then humbles himself as a child, as this child, he is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven; and whoever receives one such child in my name receives me. But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to stumble, it would be better for him to have a heavy millstone hung around his neck and to be drowned in the depth of the sea.'" You see, when you're thrown into the sea with a heavy millstone hung around your neck, you can't breathe. So I want you to think about that every time you see a child wearing a mask over their nose and mouth and struggling to breathe. "Woe to the world because of stumbling blocks, for it is inevitable that stumbling blocks should come; but woe to that man through whom the stumbling block comes. See to it that you do not despise one of these little ones, for I say to you that their angels in heaven continually see the face of my Father, who is in heaven." Every one will have to give an account for what he's done in regard to the children.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman. Mary Dietrich.
So thank you for your time. I'm in disbelief at the decisions made for our children, so I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you as a grandmother and as a concerned citizen. When I heard that you voted to end mask mandates in the school, I was very relieved that the right thing was being done for our children. Then I was told that the special education and Head Start preschool children were still mandated to wear masks. These children are at higher risk than others for permanent developmental and emotional delays. I did not say higher risk for becoming seriously ill or dying from COVID. Two letters and a DVD were sent to the principals, the superintendent, and each of you by Dr. Gullicks. As a fair-minded school board member, as fair-minded school board members, I'm sorry, I certainly hope that the political science that you adhere to did not prevent you from viewing and learning about the medical, biologic, and behavioral science in this DVD. The medical science supports that neither masks nor isolation stop the spread or prevent infection. Medical research says these kids are not at risk for COVID illness and are not spreaders. The medical science shows that these kids have actual visible brain damage seen on MRIs and CT scans. The months of not seeing faces, not learning emotional cues, and losing speech has shut down those areas of their brains. It has activated the areas of the brain responsible for anger, depression, and anxiety. It is not COVID that has caused damage to these children. I repeat, they are not at risk of becoming seriously ill or dying. It is the mandates of isolation, wearing a mask, and being forced to get shots. They pick up their parents' anxieties and fears, and the kids' stress levels increase, causing physical illness. They can't focus on learning and are falling behind in grade level performance. Politicians, including the United States President, said as late as Friday that we think the masks help. Well, since when are policies put into place due to thinking as opposed to knowing legitimate research findings? But the issue of approving the removal of masks for all schoolchildren except those in Head Start and special education is a moral issue and an issue of child abuse. I believe that you are on the school board because you care about the education of children. You know what it means to have difficulties in learning. I don't have to tell you. If your child or your grandchild was struggling to learn, you would take notice. But since you are dealing with other people's children, children you don't know, someone you feel that you have the power and the political backing to continue to suppress the freedom of those parents and children, you continue to allow failures in all areas of growth and development. You don't have the option of catering to political science. Your job is to promote educational learning, optimal learning, and to focus on educational science. Your job is to assure that the teachers are equipped to teach reading, writing, math, science, and history. They now must teach to bring children up to grade level instead of focusing their teaching on helping the children reach their optimal potential. No one has a professional career based on learning about race, gender, pronouns being suppressed, or the divisive canceling of others' opinions. Professional careers are based on a solid foundation of known truths and facts and the knowledge that is learned from educational debates. This is the way to create leaders for generations to come. Thank you.
Jean Gullicks.
Hello. I am here because I was shocked when I heard that you voted to get rid of mask mandates except for early childhood special education and Head Start students. Are you kidding me? You know as well as I do that those are the most vulnerable kids, the ones least likely to be able to communicate, those who cannot, not will not, but cannot keep masks in place. Those have the most severe learning and behavioral problems, and the youngest are the ones that you've mandated to wear masks. And you have heard the Grand Forks parents tell you of the punishment these kids have received for touching their masks, not being able to keep them on, not wearing them because they can't. Punishment is isolation, not being allowed to attend classes, spending the day in the principal's office, and being sent home. Free public education is guaranteed in the state of North Dakota for all children ages six to 16. They are not spending days being taught. They are spending days without education from their teachers. These are my patients that I'm talking about, the ones who have been punished. They are not numbers on a page. Real kids who now have real physical illnesses due to overwhelming stress, anxiety, and depression, due to hating school and having to go five days every week to an unsafe environment. A four-year-old tantrums every morning and refuses to go to preschool because he has to say everything over, and he can't understand the teachers. Other students don't understand his muffled mask sounds. A six-year-old screams and literally runs for hours on end. She refuses to eat or go to bed. She lost her gains in expressive speech since she has been sent home repeatedly because she cannot keep her mask on. She doesn't understand when she can't lip read. A 13-year-old now is in an isolated classroom due to dangerous behaviors, due to intense anger at being made to go to school with a mask on. He is now battling his parents by spreading poop all over the walls and furniture at home. He was doing well before he was forced to wear a mask and isolate. Parents need counseling because of the guilt of having to work and not being able to stay home to teach their children. I saw these three kids in the same week. New ones are on my schedule every day. You are parents and grandparents, and I know that one of you is a school teacher, one a school administrator, one a social worker, and one a medical doctor. You also know that I am a teacher, a nurse practitioner, a doctor in child development, a mental health specialist, and a counselor. I am an expert in the field, as are you. The difference is that in 2020, I logically thought that damage to our kids was inevitable and tried to prevent it. Irrevocable damage has happened, and I call it child abuse under any definition. I believe that you are on the school board because you are genuinely concerned about children's education. If that is true, why have you impeded their education and contributed to the largest decline in learning since World War II? The cognitive and developmental test scores, or IQ scores, of those born during the pandemic, newborn to two-year-olds, fell sharply to around 78. That's 22 points lower than what's considered normal in any other cohort of children that age. That is the shocking conclusion from pediatric research at Brown University published in September 2021. IQ scores for children ages two to 17 years has dropped by 21 points.
Please wrap it up.
Yes. Normal IQ ranges from 85 to 115. This drop has brought down the norm to 64 to 94 points. The drop from a mean of 100 to a mean of 77 is so large that it negatively affects graduation rates and the rest of the children's lives. Of note, in China, 40% of the students are majoring in engineering, and they do not allow social media on school days. Your new job is to find an educationally sound method of helping students to catch up instead of helping them succeed and excel. The younger they are, the less likely they are to regain lost speech, cognitive, emotional, social, and physical intellect. The only way for children to achieve their optimum potential is to make sure they have the right to trust their teachers and to believe in and respect their parents. You have undermined the significance of parents by punishing the children for parental decisions. You don't know these kids and what is best for them, but you can and should affirm the special bond they have with their parents. You and parents make the best team for ensuring success. Any parent of a child, especially a special needs child or a young child, knows that their success depends on a loving, nurturing environment, both inside and outside the home. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item six, which is superintendent's recommendations for discussion. School board meeting norms is on electronic page five. Mr. Delft.
Okay, the norms are be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation and conversation, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, and advocate on behalf of students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Delft. Let's move on to item 6B, which is public forum planning. It's electronic pages six through 35. Dr. Brenner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin, I'd be remiss if we didn't introduce our interim business manager, who is sitting at the end of the table. Michelle Emineth has been with us for several years, and she's stepped into this role at least two times previous, as we've had transitions with business managers. So I'd like to thank Michelle for being here tonight and for carrying some really heavy water as Scott Burge exited the school district. So Michelle, thank you for being here tonight. All right, page six of your packet. Might be a little difficult to look at electronically if you don't have a hard copy, because I know some of the font can get a little bit small when we're looking at graphs. But first, I just want to take you through a piece of the memo on page six, basically the second paragraph. I'm going to walk you through booklet number one for the public forum, which is scheduled on March 28th. And that's mostly demographic information. I'll take you on a high-level overview of that. And then booklet two, I'll take you through a little more detailed information, particularly the questions that will be asked of our public when we get to the small breakout groups. Once those breakout groups finish their work, getting a little bit ahead of myself, but it's part of the memo, we will have Cindy, and depending on how we're going to record, and we already have a system created for how we want to capture all the information from those small groups, Cindy will collate that, put that package together, and then some themes will emerge relative to public feedback. So we will have a facilitator, a recorder, and a resource person. Those of you who've been on the board for quite some time, at least went through this two years ago, know that as board members, you will be a resource person for those small groups. You'll work alongside with one of our school district administrators in case there are some clarifying questions that you may not have the answer to, that somebody on staff might. So let's go to booklet number one, please. I'm going to walk you basically just through the table of contents and just respond to any questions, if you have any questions about that booklet, which would go to all of the participants who register and sign up for the public forum in advance. So they would be armed with all of this information. We'll provide the background on public forums, the why we do this. And it's pretty safe to say that we go above and beyond what other school districts do every other year as it relates to century code. We could probably say many of our school board meetings over the last year have been public forums based on input that the committee, that the community has provided at the microphone. But nonetheless, this will be a little more structured, and we're seeking specific information. The mission statement, vision statement, value statements, all of those are part of the packet. The strategic plan from 2020 to 2025 will be there for participants to review, how we organize our schools, elementary, middle, and high school, and the philosophy behind middle school would be included. And then the enrollment history and projections. And you'll be able to see on page six, and I just want to call that out. It should be page six of the packet, not the electronic packet, but actual of the booklet number one. And actually backing up to page number five, you'll see the enrollment trends. I often tell colleagues who I work with, some who might be new to the district or people who are new to the community. When I arrived in 1995, we were just short of 10,000 students, pre-K through 12. After the flood of 97, with outmigration due to the flood, due to some of the downsizing at the Grand Forks Air Force Base, and then just some of outmigration of North Dakota, we went all the way down to, you know, about 6,700 students. That's like losing a large school district in the state of North Dakota. We've inched back up, and we're at about 7,400 this year. And you can see by Rob Schwartz, our demographer's, projections in 2025, 26, should be up at about 7,535. So a little bit of growth over the next four years, but not tremendous growth over the next four years. The booklet also talks about our academics, our extracurricular and co-curricular activities, our instructional administrative staffing. And then we get into all of our former business managers' favorite information, all those graphs regarding budget, revenue source, expenditures, et cetera. I think you've heard over and over again that 86, 87% of our costs are people. And Scott always pointed out our, you know, the sources of revenue that we have coming into the school district, and always highlighted that we employ more adults per student than any of the large five school districts. Following up on that, there'll be some of the tax levy information. Chris Arnold has updated our facility's deferred maintenance information. And then there's a list of school board members. So any comments on just what I would call the demographic historical snapshot of the district before I go on to booklet number two? Okay, sounds like we're ready to proceed. So I'm going to jump to electronic page 28. This would be the community engagement process. And let me back up and talk about how people are invited to the public forum. We ask our principals to solicit 10 to 15, and I say 15 for our larger campuses like Red River Central, Discovery Kelly South, Valley Schrader. They can certainly invite more than just 10. Some of our small campuses, we want to have at least 10 people representative of those campuses. But also, there's an outreach to our general population, taxpayers who might not have kids in school or might not have grandkids in school, et cetera. We would welcome their participation and attendance as well. We'll make sure that we highlight this on all of our social media platforms and through the media so that people know where they can pick up this information and be a participant on March 28th. So as you get into electronic page 29, we will provide a summary of our strategic plan. Again, you can see the mission, vision, and values. And then, of course, our three big buckets for our strategic priorities, which would be academics and our HRS framework. In our HRS framework, you'll continue to hear a lot of the diversity, equity, inclusivity, and belonging work that Dr. Lewis is leading, that that's going to be front and center within that overall HRS framework. And then the second big bucket is our comprehensive school district mental health system, all the wraparound services that we have when students come to us each and every day. And the number of staff that we've employed through ESER dollars, through some of the CARES dollars, to make sure that we have some additional services in place relative to supporting students who may not have been with us for a full academic year or at least out of the building. And then part three is the resource management and long-term planning as it relates to the budget, getting the budget in a good place by 2026, and also making sure we have a long-term facility. facilities plan moving forward. Page thirty, again, just gets into a little more detail, and we'll, we'll ask these questions rhetorically for our participants, ask them to think about why we're in this position, where we're at today, and what are some of the challenges that we have in front of us. So some of this information will be on larger slides during a, probably a quick thirty-minute introduction for all the people as we meet itself. South Middle School will meet in the cafeteria, like we've done in the past, and I'll give them enough information that will support the documents that they have in front of them as well. If you turn to page thirty-one, we get into the, the questions about where do we want to be? We're twenty-two years into the twenty-first century, and we were talking about twenty-first century learning when I was a principal at Wilder in nineteen ninety-five. So we've been using that term for quite some time, and things have changed over time. And we want to make sure that whatever we do with our learning environments, that they not only meet the needs of today, but they meet the needs flexibly of how students and teachers will teach and learn in the future. So there are five bulleted questions. I'm still on page thirty-one of the electronic packet, right in the middle of the page. We want people to think about what opportunities do both school districts have, Grand Forks Air Force Base and the city, in addressing facility concerns and aging infrastructure through revitalization and reimagining our buildings? What opportunities do the districts have in analyzing building capacity and location? What opportunities do the districts have in maximizing student achievement through changes in learning environments? What opportunities do the districts have with revenue by implementing energy and cost-saving solutions? And what opportunities do our students and community gain through a fiscally responsible bond referendum to fund larger, long-term capital needs? These are very similar questions that we asked two years ago, leading up to the June 2021 referendum. So the referendum failed, but thankfully, in September, we came back and we were successful with the ten mil, the ten mil vote, and that certainly has given us a bit of relief on our overall general fund. So we have ten mils to work with, and the finance committee will update you on just a little bit on some recommendations there. So if you would just then, please go to electronic page thirty-three. This would be, this is in here, the heat map of our density relative to where our population growth is and where our buildings are or where our buildings are not. This will help community members and patrons sort of wrap their head around the four questions that we're going to ask when we get to the four questions. The next page is the guiding change document that we all worked through together and agreed on publicly and privately that we would support this document, and that also will help guide those final questions. So if you go to the final page, please, there are a couple little clerical things that, that I'll clean up on this final page, which is why this is in draft form. We're going to share with all of the participants that they've been, provided a lot of information that evening regarding budget projections, facility needs, and school board guardrails regarding the guiding change document. So they need to spend a little time explaining to our public what that guiding change document really is. They need to know that that, that was between eight and ten hours worth of work. It wasn't just two people having ideas and, and bulleted items, so I'll take them through that process. And then we'll move them into their groups, again, where we'll have a recorder, a facilitator, and a resource person. And the first question, and I would say question one and two would be coming out of the finance committee conversations over the course of the last two or three meetings, and we'll want to finalize whether these are the right questions, not necessarily tonight, but when the school board has a special work session on February twenty-eighth at five-thirty, rather than a tour at Phoenix Elementary School. So the first question, one of the school district priorities is to replace Valley Middle School with a modern-age campus that addresses the middle school concept and employs environments conducive to present and future styles of teaching and learning. Would you support an approximately forty-two-point-five-million-dollar referendum in either 2022 or 2023 to stand up a new Valley Middle School? Why or why not? If yes, which year is preferable for the referendum? The second one, school district has a long list of deferred maintenance projects that include reinvestments in Schrader and South Middle Schools. Rather than a single middle school referendum, would you support an approximately eighty-million-dollar referendum that would include a new Valley Middle School, a major investment in Schrader Middle School, and some investment in South Middle School in either 2022 or 2023? Why or why not? If yes, which is preferable for the referendum? Would you like to see this investment phased in over time? If yes, what would you recommend for a timeline? So even though we only have three or four questions, we think three or four questions is going to generate a lot of information. Number three, South End Elementary Schools such as Kelly and Discovery are at or nearly at capacity. Would you support a referendum within five years to build a new South End Elementary School between Fifty-Fifth and Sixty-second Avenue South, between South Washington and Belmont Road? Why or why not? There could be another question that could be asked in there. We might have some other schools at capacity at that time. So if that feels too leading, we can certainly make that more of a general question. And then the final question, what other suggestions do you have for the school board and district leadership related to the topics discussed tonight? So with that, I'll take a breath. There was a lot of information through two packets and respond to questions, have you thought of, or certainly provide some recommendations for us to work into the, into the two book, two booklets, excuse me.
Thank you, Dr. Brenner. Thoughts from board members? Go ahead, Cynthia.
I've got just a few, I've got a question, first of all, Dr. Brenner, and that is the public meeting itself. Will there be a time for the larger group to have questions answered? Because those of us on the board at the time, there was a pretty difficult time, I'm sure that Doug remembers, and so I think it might be important to allow some questions, but I don't know if you've got that built into the time schedule or how, if, if, if not, then we need to be clear on that from the get-go.
Yeah, the, the last time was two years ago, and I led that conversation, and, and I don't believe we asked if there were any questions for the large group, but we certainly captured those questions in small group. I'd, I'd want to think about that, if we've got two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty people, how that, how that could be managed. But I, but I certainly know the experience you're talking about from a few years ago.
And I think part of the problem there was it wasn't clear, you know, to the public that, that really we want you to have discussions in, in your small groups. And I think what you're suggesting is maybe we make it clear to people that, because if we open it up to the, to the large group, we may never get to the small groups. I think maybe if we go that same route, we should just make it clear that we want this conversation to continue in the small groups rather than start picking off individuals in the large group. Is that what you're saying, Cynthia?
My suggestion would be an agenda, you know, just an agenda that says presentation by Dr. Brenner and whoever is presenting, and then, you know, just, I think that'll make it more clear that questions will be answered in the small groups. So I do have other comments, but do you want me just to go through my list?
Well, you can start. If, if in a half an hour you're still going, we might move to somebody else, but go ahead and start.
All right, thanks. So just a general comment, electronic copy needs, or the, the printed copy needs to be clear, so twenty-four to twenty-six of electronic copy, I think, is still a little bit dicey in terms of reading it, even maybe, I mean, I love the heat map, but I can't read the, I mean, I, if I squint, of course, I don't, I have glasses, so my vision is twenty-twenty with my glasses. If I squint, I can read the graph, you know, the, the descriptions, but it's harder. So I don't know if there's a way to get that clear, because I know you're capturing that from something, but just, just make everything as clear as possible. So here are some more substantial, under the counseling, page sixteen of one fifty-eight, I just think we should be highlighting our mental health coordinator, our addiction counselor, and sources of strength. I think it would be beneficial to kind of increase that because it's been such a concern for the district with masking and all of that, and COVID and distancing. And then I had two questions that I wanted the group to kind of think about, if possible. With the questions at the end of the small group input, I wondered about asking for specific feedback about Winship and Wilder, since we did have a referendum that failed to put Winship and Wilder over with Valley. Maybe that's a place for discussion, Dr. Lunn. And then, is there a place in here to address specifically safety and security of schools? Because certainly our facilities plan, and when we tour, even today at, at Central, you know, safety and security comes up with entrances and all of that. So didn't know quite where that would fit, but those were my, those were kind of the general questions that I had that came to my head. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just for clarification for myself, we're going to be talking more about this at the, at the work session in a couple weeks. We don't, this document doesn't have to be finalized tonight, or does it have to be finalized?
No, we're going to bring it back to you with some edits.
Because some of the things that you bring up about Winship and Wilder might take some thought process to go through, so. Other board members' thoughts? Go ahead, Doug.
I just got one comment, which is on that last page. I'm, I'm not sure that we should ask the question, is either 2022 or 2023, because I think anytime you ask somebody if you want to raise their taxes, they're going to push it as far as possible. So I'm, I'm not really comfortable with that. I would, I personally would prefer we just asked about 2022. If they don't like it, they'll tell us versus, I mean, if I'm given the choice, I'm probably going to say, well, sure, let's do it in 2023. Why, why not? You know? I mean, you're relying on us making a really, really strong case, which I think we can, but still, I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned about how we've approached that.
Well, the other options, not to even put in a year given, just to say them. Other thoughts? Chris, any thoughts? Jeff? Bill? Amber? My, my only thought i- is, is about the question on number two, on the back page, about the, you know, the Schrader and South Middle School, you know, the reinvestments. And, and I have to, I'll have to go back to the priority list, but are we narrowing it down too much? I mean, we're talking about building a new middle school, then we're talking about remodeling two other ones, and not, not nary a word about elementary school needs and stuff. And I just worry a little bit about that, and where's, where's the priority list of all the, all the things? I just worry a, a little bit about that. And then I also worry a little bit about throwing things together. I think that was one of the issues with our first failed referendum. I don't know that, I, we didn't do any scientific studies, but, but we, we threw in a new middle school and a new elementary school together, and, and should the questions be more separated rather than throwing more things together? So, so I, I, I don't have the answer. I don't know if that's right or wrong, and I know you guys have probably had more discussions at the finance committee about it, but that was something I think we should probably think about. Go ahead, Amber.
I wonder, maybe specific to number two, if we had a list of five to ten priorities, we could ask individuals to, like, sort of rank them or put them in rank order versus maybe trying to get opinions on a couple things, perhaps? I don't know.
Go, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I think another thing, I like the idea of a priority list, too, but I think at a work session, we need to kind of talk of what we're comfortable with going after. I, I think, you know, last time we had that layout, and some of us were at seventy million, some were at ninety-six million, some were at this, you know, I am not real comfortable going at eighty million. I think that's just way too much, and I think the work session is where we need to hash that out and, and redo these questions, so they have that within that, so.
Go ahead, Cynthia.
So kind of going back to Doug's comment, this is the same for question, you know, they both, so both question one and question two have choices, so I'm sure you caught that, but it's always better, I think, to have a question with just, like, one, one, one year, one answer, you know?
I, I do think we will talk about this more at the, at the work session, but I, I kind of like the idea of that, of that second question, because I think at finance, we're, we're debating and we're discussing whether we should do all at once or over maybe two different referendums to do these middle school. And the reason for the middle schools is, as I recollect them, is because it's larger projects that take off a lot of deferred maintenance. And, and so there's a rationale for why that's in the, in the scenarios. And so I think this would give us some good information as to the appetite of the community. Now, I think I probably agree with Bill that there's probably going to be a lot of heartache about doing eighty million, but we'll find that out from the, the attendees at that forum if, if we're right or not, because I don't know for sure, but, so I, that's why I kind of lean to keeping that kind of question.
Hence the reason to have a work session for those of us that aren't on the finance committee and haven't seen or heard some of this stuff, so thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Just, just a comment, and Dr. Brenner, you can confirm this, the, the principals, when they invite these families, they're going to be inviting a diverse, there's going to be diverse population, socioeconomic, it's not going to be just those they would, it'll be, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Any other feedback for Dr. Brenner and his team? There is. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Yeah, I forgot this, because, so on page, sorry, on page nine of the electronic packet, look at number two. So you're going to want to probably put, do you want to add that it'll be on a school website? Are you going to put it on the school media platform? This is probably something that's pretty fairly old when we just used the official newspaper. So number two, page nine of the electronic packet, background on public forums.
Brent, any thoughts, questions from your side?
No, sir. Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with it on mine. Don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. We look forward to you, you all being there on the night, too, so it's always a fun night with both boards. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Follow-up, so maybe the, our student has some ideas here.
Okay, not to put you on the spot, haven't you got any thoughts? Thank you. We look, we look forward to you being there, too, because the state basketball tournament will be over by then, so you'll be back joining us, so. Thank you all. Good discussion. Let's move on to item six C, which is the finance committee report on electronic page thirty-six is the minutes. I don't think they've been approved, they're just draft minutes. Doug?
Okay. First, actually, on page thirty-nine of the electronic packet is the meeting minutes from the first of February, so that really is part of this report. After the application, we talked about the tax incentive financing for all of ANN. That will come up under, on a different item, so I'm not really going to address that in this report. But part of those minutes, on the, the second page of those minutes, which is page forty of the electronic packet, talks about the budget realignment scenarios that we discussed and reviewed and talked about, and there is a recommendation that's, that's coming out of, of finance to approve certain scenarios. And there was three scenarios. The first scenario required only a five-hundred-thousand-dollar drawback of facility, for, for facilities projects in the general fund, and projects a budget surplus of a million, one oh six. So there was some cuts, some, really, not really cuts, that took place within the budget. It was more some realignment in how some of those dollars are being spent, coming from ESAR dollars, because we're unable to fill some positions that we're going to spend ESAR dollars on, so we're able to, to transition some. So it's going to, it's going to reduce what we're spending out of the general fund within the current year, which increases our fund balance. But it, it does talk about using only five-hundred-thousand dollars for facilities related, coming out of there.
Doug, can I just ask you a quick question? I'm sorry, I'm just, when you say five-hundred-thousand dollars and then three million and then six million, is that total or is that per year or?
Per year.
That's per year over twenty years? Depends, okay, anyway.
There's no, I guess, deadline.
Okay, it's, but it's per year. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So it's, each year, we would be taking five-hundred-thousand, other So it's, each year we would be taking $500,000 out of the general fund, which we have been taking significantly more of that, and that's why our general fund balance is so low. Another scenario would require us to withdraw $3 million a year for facilities projects. And it would include all, this scenario includes all the things suggested in scenario one, and basically plus a reduction in force of 42 FTEs. Scenario three is even more dramatic, $6 million for facilities, and that would result in about 84 FTEs. Because if we were spending that kind of money, we would have to be reducing salaries and benefits, and that's what the equivalent was. So those really related to the budget in particular, though that has an impact on the facilities planning, but there were two, there were three facilities plans. Scenario one, which is, includes all schools and estimates about $202 million of projects through 2030, of which has us doing that and funding them via donation, energy savings, ESAR, and via financing a portion of the 10 mills in the building fund, which is the new 10 mills, because the existing 10 mills is right currently now, not available. That, there's a second option to that one with, would include all schools being funded from those other sources, less Valley Middle School, which basically takes $24 million of deferred maintenance and other expenditures off the table. Scenario three includes all schools, less the New Valley, and then improvements to Schrader and South Medical, Middle School, which gets us down to about 144 million. So that's why those middle schools were looked at versus elementary schools, some larger projects, easier to talk about the larger projects, and does a huge amount of, of reduction in our deferred maintenance. What Finance discussed that a lot, these numbers, the 202 does not really create, it addresses deferred maintenance, it doesn't necessarily address all the aspects of the 21st century learning. And even looking at these scenarios, probably doesn't meet the facilities funding needs that we have. So even with those other funding sources, we talked about energy savings, donation, ESAR, the 10 mills is not going to get us there. So the, so the recommendation at this point from Finance is that we approve scenario one from a general fund budget, which is the $500,000 drawdown. And we approved and recommend scenario three, which is the full middle school concept. But it's not talking about, is that all in one fell swoop, or is it in a couple of different referendums? Because there was discussion and debate and not consensus at the board, at the Finance Committee at the time, which we feel is going to be another focus of the discussion at the facilities, at that workshop, that will, that will, work session. So the committee is recommending, it's not coming for approval tonight, because we're going to have that work session, to have that discussion, get everybody to hear the same information, hear this, get, have the discussion take place more fully. But this is where Finance is today. Any questions as it relates to those realignment, budget realignment scenarios? Very, very quick and brief.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Perhaps I should wait until the work session, but when we talk about these, these reductions, is this through attrition, or is it, are we talking over what time period? What, what, what's the discussion on that piece?
Well, with this recommendation, there isn't going to have to be reductions in staffing. So if, if we go to a different scenario, then there will have to be a reduction in FTEs, and we did not get into a detailed discussion of what would come from resignations, retirements, or reduction in force. Because just the, the concept of that, those kinds of reductions is just, is devastating to the education that we provide to students, so we really didn't even want to go there.
I think we.
Thank you. And I may have, I may have misunderstood, so I apologize. Yeah, the reading that, I, second look, I fully understand now, so that's, that was an error on my part. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
I think it was stated, though, that the class sizes at that level would probably go up at least five students, even more per class. I'm not mistaken.
And we had good discussion from Dr. Lewis about, you know, where the impacts on our, our kids are today, and where we have some gaps and things that we need to do, and the impacts, just, it's, just can't go there. Now, the problem that you have to recognize is that by only taking a half million dollars a year out of the general fund, the primary source of funding is going to have to be future referendums, which means a referendum probably every couple of years for the next 10, 12 years, to, to be able to meet these facility needs. So that's, will be part of the discussion that will happen two weeks from tonight, too.
Other questions for Doug?
As it relates to this one.
As it relates to this part. And I, and I assume the, the bonding issue, which I'm assuming you're going to talk about next, is separate from these two different scenarios, but obviously it plays, plays into it, but they're separate questions.
Correct.
Any other questions about either of these two scenarios with regards to budget realignment? If not, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. And then on February 9th, we met and talked about, we've had some prior discussions, talking about potentially bonding a portion of the two and a half million dollars that we, was voted on by the public and approved last fall. And the, the part of the rationale for doing a bonding is that gives you some more, more potential for dollars upfront, to address some projects, to deal with some larger projects, and multiple ones that, most of this dollars would probably be spent on, on notification systems, you know, security, those kind, those kinds of issues. But that'll be part of the discussion at the work session as well. And so we talked about how much of the two and a half million should be used, what timeframe should the, should the bond issue be over? Should it be over 10 years? Should it be over 20 years? The ultimate recommendation of the committee is that we should start the bond process for using $1 million of that two and a half million, and do it over a 20-year period, which would generate around $16 million available for projects. Again, addressing life safety, mask notification projects, basically for all buildings, you know, other than potentially the middle schools, depending on the direction we ultimately go on, referendums for those. And it was good discussion back and forth. We thought a million was a level that we could live with, because we're going to need money for emergency-type projects and different things each year as they come up that we may not be able to anticipate. So with 500,000 and a million and a half, it gives us 2 million that we can maybe feel a little bit of comfort for addressing emergency and some of the smaller projects. Questions?
Questions for Doug? Go, go ahead, Bill.
Part of the conversation that we did have, that just does generate, as Doug said, about $16 million that we can move forward and do a lot of work with, and I think we all agreed that if we would start now, interest rates are not going to be going down, and they'll be starting to go up, so it would be smart for us to go after that, low, as low as interest rate as we can get right now. And then the other thing that I did mention is that, over that 20-year period, when we're spending that, the million-dollar payment, we do free up some bonds that'll be coming free in seven or eight years, and in a few more, three or four years later. So there is some freedom that we can see down the road as we move forward. So it isn't going to be a total 20 years without any additional money coming in for building funds.
Are there clarifying questions or comments? I have a pretty simplistic mind, so, so a million dollars a year for 20 years generates 16 million. Does that mean 4 million goes to interest? Or why does it not add up to 20?
Because yes, you'll be paying interest over that 20-year period, plus you'll have some issuance costs and those kinds of things, too. And it was a little bit more than 16, until you know the exact rate. It could be 17, it could, you know, you don't know exactly, but someplace in the 16 million.
And this isn't up for action tonight?
No.
But if we approve this, that's not, that doesn't mean we're approving a bond issue. It means we're approving getting the ball rolling, and we would, it would have to come back at a later time to, to say, yeah, do we want to do this or not?
We, we basically at Finance authorized the administration to start the process, contact Bond Council, get some specifics and that kind of stuff, so it can come back to us to get back to the board.
But it'll have, ultimately it'll have to come back to the board for final approval, and depend upon what happened with insurance rates over the last two months or whatever.
Interest rates.
Interest rates, yeah, I'm sorry. Other clarifying questions, comments? You guys are just all smarter than me. I have all these silly questions. Doug, do you have anything else? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Let's move on. I got to find my, where I put my agenda here. Let's move on to item 6D, which is debrief of the Grand Forks Central High School Building Tour. It's on electronic page 37. I believe there were five of us on the tour, and I will just open it up to the board members first, and then I'll ask our administrative colleagues their thoughts, too. I made you guys go first last time, so I'm going to make you guys. Chris, Jeff, who wants to go first?
Thank you. Great school, love the place. Two issues that really stood out is again, the secure entryway, and also the, it's not real, the main entryway is not really ADA compliance, so we need to really look at doing something there. And the other issue was some of the spaces are quite cramped and dated, and have to be rebuilt and restructured, I guess, and, and figure out what we can do there to make it more conducive to learning.
Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Yeah, I would follow that, it'd be, when he discussed, Mr. Strandell discussed, if a student is disabled and in a wheelchair, he also went down the avenue, if a student has been in a basketball game, for example, is injured, what it takes to enter the school, what would it take to go through lunch? This, you know, there's a lot of things that take place, yet what was impressive is how he talked about the school being tight, and, and tight, and they get along, tight, and that they care for one another, tight, and that the students are the priority, and also tight that some rooms are rather tight with students. And I'm, I'm deferring to Evan, who perhaps may give us some feedback on that. So again, it was, it was reassuring to once can see leadership in a school, deal with the realities, yet deal with the realities in a way that's, that's caring, persevering, and taking care of students. And just to comment, the two associate principals were told to go home, and they stayed because they wanted to be there and to participate. So it was, it was just a really reassuring visit. So Evan, perhaps when we're done, you could share a thought or two that you've had with Central, and some of the things that you've seen that are very positive are, are in need.
Hold that thought for a minute. Cynthia?
Sure. So I don't want to double, double up. So I think with the safety, security, we also heard quite a bit about just the lack of a good notification system. So not just the front entrance, but a notification system needs to be addressed. One thing that I took away, too, is the lack of effective space for staff to gather. The lunchroom is really loud. They used to use a lecture hall that is quite small, and some chairs not even working. So they don't really have a place for collaborative gathering amongst the faculty and, and staff. In general, just classrooms that we saw were really small. The ninth grade science class in particular was, I don't know how they fit people in that room. And then I want to add, ADA compliance also would include staff, you know, to get into the building for staff.
Thank you. Doug?
I don't know if there's much that I can add. I mean, the, the staff and students, I mean, it really comes off that they really love that building, but it definitely has some needs. The notification, ADA, just, I mean, they've had to take and do a lot of different things to try to find space. We're going to have to address one question in the future here regarding the pool, and what that will, that would free up space if there's no pool at Central, but that also means something else for our swim program and, and the community at, at large, so. And the lack of green space, and everything requires transportation, or students basically have to do transportation to get to places for football practice, or, you know, or, or other types of activities that don't happen right on campus, so. So, great building, it's in pretty good shape, but needs a lot to allow it to go forward.
The only thing I would add, and it's been said at every school tour meeting we've had this year, is the upkeep of the school is phenomenal, the staff that keeps that up. I mean, I was walking through a 100-year-old building in parts, and it looked like it was brand new, and it's because of the dedication of this, the staff that keeps that up. They really just do a wonderful job, otherwise I would echo everybody else's responses. Dr. Lewis, any thoughts that you have? Catherine, thoughts that you have? Dr. Brenner? Okay, Evan, you're up. You, you live, you live and breathe the halls every day. Any, any thoughts that you have, both, both challenges there, or things that are great there?
Oh, I think one of the best things that are there is that, like, they really preach the history of that school, like, as much as they can. So like, throughout the hallways, you guys have probably seen all, like, the banners of all the people in the building itself and stuff like that. So they do a really good job with showing the history of that school, and I mean, it's kind of cool, we get like marble floors and granite walls and stuff like that, and like, you don't ever see that in schools nowadays. ADA-wise, it definitely isn't the best, because I'm pretty sure there's one entrance where someone could get in with a wheelchair, then they'd have to go up an elevator to get to the main hall, to go up a different elevator to get to the third floor, and it's all really kind of compacted. And I haven't really had to deal with that part firsthand, so I don't really understand the struggles as maybe someone who would have to do that every single day, which would get frustrating. And like, looking at the memorandum, talking about green space, there's pretty much none, but, you know, in a high school, it's not quite as necessary as it would be in an elementary or middle school standpoint, especially that we have like proper arena and stuff for our football program.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback. I think it's going to be very helpful. Let's move on to item seven, the superintendent's recommendations for actions. 7A is application of the TIF. That's on electronic pages 38 through 78. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Dr. Lund. I'm just going to read this memo, just to keep me on point, and hopefully to keep the entire board on point as, as you deliberate the Finance Committee's recommendation. So at the January 24th School Board meeting, board members directed the school board's Finance Committee to reconvene, which happened on February 9th, or, excuse me, February 1st, with City Administrator Todd Phelan and Olivan Boutique Hotel financer Phil Giesi related to further negotiations on the proposed tax incentives financing around Mr. Giesi's project. In other words, you wanted to see changes to the proposed financing structure that would better financially serve the school district. Moreover, additional information was provided by Mr. Phelan and Mr. Giesi that brought more clarity to the entire project at the Finance Committee meeting on February 1st. Mr. Giesi did provide a compromise from his original requests as follows. So you can see on the left-hand side, when the proposal was first provided to the board, it was a 100% pilot exemption for years six through 10, and an 80% pilot exemption for years 11 through 15. Mr. Giesi compromised, came in with a 90% pilot for years six through 10, and an 80% pilot for 11 through 15. So he did come down 10, 10% in years six through 10. Additionally, the Finance Committee members requested Mr. Phelan to ask the Grand Forks City Council if there'd be any appetite for the city to provide a portion of its increased revenue from the TIF to the school district. At the February 7th City Council meeting, no action was taken on the Finance Committee's request. So tonight, it's administrative recommendation is to, is for you to discuss the Finance Committee's recommendation and build consensus toward the approval of the Olivan Boutique Hotel tax incentive financing plan. Thank you.
And Doug, or Finance, there's three of you here, the, the recommendation that came out of the last Finance meeting was to approve this, this, this with the changes that Mr. Giesi had made, along with, along with request to go to the City Council. Is that, is that what came out of Finance on February 1st?
Yes. Though I at least reserve the right to vote differently than that recommendation.
We, we would never hold you to your original vote at a committee level when it comes to the board. So the, the recommendation is to approve the, what came out of Finance Committee. Further clarifying questions by board members, comments by board members? Go, go ahead, Bill.
I made the recommendation.
Yeah, I made the recommendation to, to move it forward, and mainly because we are, it helps with our relationship since it is supported by the EDC as well as the city council. We are gonna be going forward, ask for referendums from, in the future, and it's nice to have that support of them. I think the other thing we heard is that it will provide some internships, some job shadowing jobs for our students, which is something I think it would be great for the kids at Central, 'cause it's only gonna be a few blocks from Central down the street. And I think the other thing is Mr. Giesi was very good on the phone, he was in the airport at Minneapolis and took the time to visit with us, and I think we had a good discussion with us, and he did adjust his, his commitment to this, so I, for me, I think it, it's a move in the right direction to approve this.
Further questions, comments by board members? Go ahead, Doug.
You know, I, I think this is better than the original proposal that came to us. I'm still concerned about how the city addresses and deals with these issues. I think it has a drastic impact on the school district and other governing entities in the interim on these. So I'm, I'm not sure that I'm convinced yet that, that we should support this one, I think it's more of a want for the community than a need, and I, and I, I do compliment Todd Phelan, he did take our recommendation or ask of him to take back in a good faith manner, to ask the city council if there was any appetite for sharing of the revenue in a different manner that we would be getting under that first ten percent. I don't know where the city will go on that, they didn't take any action, 'cause it was a recommendation of the city attorney that this project hasn't been formally approved, there's a public hearing in March, and so anything like that should take place later, not now, so, which is gonna be well after the time of our approval or disapproval. So I, I do compliment Todd, he did, he did make a good faith effort. There were a couple of positive responses, you know, that at least had some interest. There was some response that I won't go into any specifics about, but I didn't think it was necessarily appropriate in the manner that it was done. So, I think you're all aware that I'm, I'm generally opposed to these kinds of things. I was going back over a whole bunch of papers that I've kept from over my years in public service when I was a city council, and I came across something that I had written to the city council back when it was discussing TIFs. I opposed it then, I still oppose them today, but I also found something that was attached to that, that, that I thought was interesting, because it was a letter from this Grand Forks School Board, it's dated February twenty-third, nineteen ninety-four, to the Grand Forks City Council. And what that says is the Grand Forks School Board has been informed that the city council is considering granting tax increment financing to major development projects as opposed to using the growth fund to support these projects. Topic was discussed at the February twenty-second school board meeting, and the board unanimously agreed that this would be similar to the concept of tax exemptions granted new home builders, which the school board has voiced opposition to in recent years. We respectfully urge you to utilize the growth fund because it was intended for this purpose, and it does not have the long-term negative effect on tax revenues, as is the case with tax increment financing. Thank you for consideration of our request, and it was signed by Rod Middlestead for the Grand Forks School Board. So, these discussions have occurred before, there's been opposition from the school board before, so this is not necessarily unique, that there would be discussions. I just, I just, part of me wants to, you know, this is a way for them to do development that has an impact on others. I think the taxing entities need to be brought in sooner before it's a finalized project, 'cause that's really what comes to the, to the advisory committee is a, is a finalized project. I think they need to have better discussion of what other sources of revenue that they have that could do some of these deals, and if it is a need, well, ask the public for more money if they need it, versus relying on us to just go along with their requests when they come, so. Nothing against the project, I mean, I, I think it's a good project, but to me, it should be financed by the public sector, they should pay the obligations of being a property owner in Grand Forks, and that means you gotta pay property taxes. So, again, I'm probably a no vote on this, but I'd be willing to hear any comments by others that may sway me differently.
I admire your convictions, and you've been consistent with your convictions through the years, so. Eddie, any further questions, comments from other board members? Go ahead, Amber.
Well, as a Realtor and someone who just built a new home, I would be so sad about not having a new homeowner tax exemption, but, um, excuse me. I changed my stance on this a little bit from the original meeting, in part because we made an ask to the project to negotiate, and I think that because the school district had a right to do that and, you know, made it clear that it'd be nice to benefit from some of those dollars sooner rather than later, Mr. Giesi and his team went back and he reworked the numbers and actually reduced some costs on his project, reduced some rooms in order to make the ninety percent exemption work in the, in the six through ten years, so I, I thought that it was really a, a effort in good faith to negotiate and to rework some of those numbers on behalf of our request. I agree with Doug that I think the process could be better, however, you know, we don't control that process per se, I think that there needs to be larger conversations about how it can be done, but I, I don't think in this instance that the user or requester of the property tax exemption should be, I guess, penalized because of maybe a, a poor process in this example. This document that you see on page sixty-seven, sixty-seven, was a new document that we saw. I had asked for some of this in the school board meeting about opportunities available for our students, and, and perhaps Evan could speak to this as well, but the, the Career Impact Academy survey was forty percent of students surveyed indicating interest in culinary arts and hospitality fields, and I don't know, Evan, if you hear students who are interested in hospitality or becoming a chef or anything like that, but it was really interested, interesting to see that that fell second just to medical careers and the lack of opportunities that maybe we have around our area and students having to go away to college or go elsewhere prior to their college experience, that this might be able to provide. And so, I think in the last meeting, I had referenced that this is, it felt like a very narrow scope, and I think part of that was because we didn't have some of this information, and I was really looking for a indirect benefit other than financial gain down the road when the project came to full value, that we are able to provide our students in the district. At the end of the day, we're trying to balance what's best for students first, and I think this project can help provide some of those opportunities, and then it can hopefully help provide some, a variety of opportunities down the road with financial benefit as well. The number of students that the district might see as positive enrollment, the same formula here was applied to the Foo Fung project, so if anyone is wondering where those numbers came from, they use the same formula that they utilize to identify how many students might be incoming, and so six, while sixty thousand might not seem much, that's, you know, one basically like benefited starting teacher position, and the amount of jobs that it would create, in talking with some of the individuals involved in this project, you know, we talk about jobs in our city and sometimes we reference, you know, just construction jobs that come and go, whereas the hospitality industry and this project, they're really looking at moving past just jobs and creating careers for individuals in the hospitality field, where there would be long-term sustainable jobs for their families to be able to provide. The lastly, or last thing that this document provided that I don't think we have talked about much, and I think is probably lacking in our, our communication with the public is number five, compared to peer cities, there's less total property value per capita in Grand Forks, which means that we have to charge higher taxes per person in Grand Forks to generate the same amount of revenue our mill levy offers, to generate the same amount of revenue and our mill levy offers less value per mill than our peers. And so, it said beyond the argument that commerce is better, it's an important, significant, long-term strategy to accelerate growth of commercial property. And so I think people always compare us to Fargo, saying, well, you know, why does it seem like maybe there's less burden, or they're doing a referendum all the time? Well, they also have a large footprint of commercial properties that help pay a portion of those property taxes, and so, right now, it's just a parking lot, and I think, you know, the addition of this and more conversations that we had more information that was provided, while it does seem niche, and I think people can pick apart maybe a niche project, I also believe that Grand Forks is a city and a town that should have experiences and events and places to go that anyone could access and value, whether it's perceived as a high-end experience or a very simple experience, and so, for those reasons, I asked for the information, I asked for the company or organization to be willing and open to negotiation, and I felt like I received the information that I was looking for, despite what we might see as a convoluted process upfront and maybe could be better. I believe the individuals and the organization who requested the exemption gave me the information that I was looking for and met the request to at least negotiate. I do think that the city and county could benefit from some of the sales tax with room charges and things like that, and they should be open to negotiation on maybe some of their share, because we don't get to take advantage of that, but I don't know that it's fair to hang our hats necessarily on the city and county waiting to try to determine what they might do with their portion when the individual has, has negotiated and reduced their costs to, to be able to do so. So, because of those reasons, I was supportive of the recommendation to the school board that we move forward with this project.
Evan, you got any comments about culinary arts and CIA?
I feel like there's two reasons why kids would take that. One is that like that's one skill that you're always gonna need, like kids can go without welding, kids can go without, like a nursing class, but they're gonna need to learn how to cook, and the second one is that, you know, you get a snack in the middle of the day when you go to that class, you know, two times a week when you cook, you know, you gotta, you gotta eat apple pie or blueberry cobbler, whatever you cook that day, so it's an incentive program.
Those don't sound as auspicious as I was thinking beforehand, so, but, but, but truth be, truth be told, so. Further comments at all, Mr. Douthat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a very brief comment, and it's for you, Mr. Carpenter. You know, we've been hearing a lot of discourse over the last two, three years, and, and we talk about being kind to one another, and we've seen some very angry people, and, and that's acceptable, they have the right to be angry, they have the right to, to tell us what they're thinking, yet I just wanna, I just appreciate your honesty, your willingness to say what it is that you believe and hold your convictions true. It's, it's to be appreciated, and as I've said to you in, in private conversations, I respect a lot of what you talk when it comes to finance, I respect your reasoning, I respect your history, and I just wanna say that I think being kind and being polite with one another is most important, 'cause right now, there's just way too much anger in this nation, so I just wanna give you a personal thank you, and I will let you know that I will be supporting this.
I think we all echo that, and you haven't called us a Nazi once, so we really appreciate, appreciate that. I have just two quick, quick comments. One is I, I've, I've heard from a couple of people in, in town that, well, Lund, you have, you have a conflict of interest, 'cause you know Phil Giesi and you know Sadie Gardner, and that's true, I do know them, but I know tons of people, I've lived here for thirty-five years, I've worked in businesses, I don't have any financial conflicts at, at all, I don't have any interest in Phil's businesses at all or Sadie's businesses. The only interest I have in Phil's businesses is I get older, I really like his senior housing concept, that's the only interest, I have no financial interest at all, and, and you all know that I've, I've supported this since the beginning, and, and the one thing I wanna make sure that the public knows, and it was on, outlined on page sixty-eight, and you don't have to turn to that, but there is zero financial risk to the school district on this, we are not sinking money in this, there is zero financial risk, we can't lose money on this project whatsoever, we can only make money, and if, and, and if Olive Ann goes belly up in ten years, we're not out any money, and in fact, we will gain more money, 'cause that building will still be worth something even if it financially collapsed, so, so I just wanna make sure the public is aware that we have no financial risk in this project at, at all, and, and in fact, if, if it's successful, which we all want it to be, the, the tax money generated from that will be very beneficial to the school district, so I too will also support this. Any further clarifying questions or comments? If not, okay, go ahead, Cynthia.
So I, I can't, couldn't find it in the, in the document, but I believe Dr. Brenner has talked about Team Grand Forks and that city, county, school district, and so, that to me plays an important part in this, and, you know, I think that a vibrant grant downtown is important to the city. In fact, if you think about it, we have had a lot of boutiques, stores, not hotels, settle downtown, and if they had other visitors coming in, then they could do flourish, so that kinda gets back at what Amber was talking about with sales tax revenues going into the city. So, that's kind of my general thought, I'm in support of it as well.
Thank you. So the recommendation from the finance committee is to approve the, the TIF as, as outlined in the memorandum. What does the board like to do?
I would, I would make a motion that we approve the Olive Ann Boutique Hotel, if you're in it.
Do we have a second? Second by Jeff. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, roll call, Cindy.
Paul Nacino?
Aye.
Shab?
Aye.
Carpenter?
No.
Douthat?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Hassett is absent. Manley?
Aye.
Mikula is absent. Lund?
Aye.
Six yes, one no, two absent.
Thank you, motion carries. I also, I also think, and, and I, I certainly agree with, with the, especially what Doug and Amber said, I think this process has been a little clunky, and I think we and the city and other people that are involved in these TIFs can learn from this and try and make it a smoother, better process over, over time, so, thank you all. Let's move on to item seven B, which is a consent agenda, which is on electronic pages seventy-nine through ninety. Do we have a, a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Motion by Bill and a second by Cynthia? You have a question? We should have pulled it from the agenda, but we'll go ahead and give it to you, so.
I'm just curious, how often, like how long could someone remain on leave for? Like, could they essentially like, be approved every year for a fi- a five-year timeframe, or?
Two years, like, like a childcare leave?
Yeah, 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 okay, two years, just curious, thank you.
Can I just ask one quick question as well?
You guys. Go ahead, Doug.
It just, it just seems like this year, there's a number of ones that are not going all the way to the end of the school year. Just, is, is, am I right about that, or is, am I just not thinking that, it just seems like we got a lot that aren't?
You are correct, and Dr. Brenner's gonna tell us why.
I can't always tell you the reason why when they're under consent, but you've seen a few more this year than in the past.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Let's move on to the excitement for tonight, the district calendar for Let's move on to the excitement for tonight, the district calendar for 22, 23, on electronic pages 91 through 93, Ms. Galach.
I appreciate the introduction, it is exciting. Anytime the calendar committee comes to a conclusion, it is exciting because we have a collaborative group that has all kinds of diverse perspectives. So according to board policy, A B A B, the board is required to approve school calendar start and end dates along with the blackout dates. I want to remind you that in the past few years when we have had this new collaborative process, we've really put the heart of teaching and learning at the, in the center of our conversations. Our collective commitments include protecting the best interests of teaching and learning at all levels and ensuring fluidity in instructional practices. You can see there's a myriad of considerations that are looked at before we put forth a calendar. And there's a sample calendar in here for next school year for you to know all the rest, rest of the nuts and bolts around it. So the recommendation is for the 2022, 2023 school year, we would begin on Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, and end on Thursday, June 1st, 2023. In addition, you can see the blackout dates designated there, they're 20 for the middle school, 20 for the high school and 22 for the elementary school. And those blackout dates really protect teacher time so that they can prepare for things like conferences and open houses and report cards and, and big ticket issues or big ticket items. So you'll also see that there's a preliminary recommended start and end date for 23, 24. There's a typo in that line, Wednesday, it's August 30th, not 20th, 2023, and on Thurs- ending on Thursday, May 30th, 2024, is just a preliminary look at the following year's calendar. So recommendation is to approve.
And just for clarity, the recommendation is to approve the end and start dates and the blackout dates for 22, 23, but also to tentatively approve the start and end dates for 23, 24, correct?
That is correct, thank you.
Further clarifying questions or comments? Go ahead Amber.
I guess one of the only questions I have, and it's, it's not really up to the calendar committee, but sort of mirrors, the PTOs typically have meetings on school board nights. And so I just wonder if that's a consideration as, you know, you're, you're looking at just having conversations about things like this or, you know, if, if, and I, I know that's not like a district thing, but maybe just a point of reference that if those could be like staggered, if, if say a school board member who happened to be a parent wanted to attend a PTO meeting or vice versa, if PTOs were so engaged to attend a school board meeting that.
So I'm hearing you volunteer to be a president of the PTO in your child's building? Yes, I will, yeah, we'll feed that forward to, you're right, we don't have any control over PTO calendars, but we will feed that information forward to building principals who can work collaboratively with their parent groups. It's a good point.
Discovery should move their PTO meetings to Tuesday for her, so. Go ahead Doug.
I'm just curious, you know, with that second tentative date, starting six days later and ending two days earlier, how does that work? What are you eliminating from that?
Yeah, really, so it's a great question. We'd have to look at the, the, kind of the details of a calendar, but the way that any sort of break falls, it really does depend on when a holiday might fall and what the surrounding dates are. There's, there's, there's one difference in a switch to an additional professional development date to help accommodate, and this is again preliminary, to accommodate all of the extra requirements set forth by sentry code, as well as accommodate our PD around the work that we really want to do in the name of our kids. Those two things aren't always, they're not always one in the same. But otherwise, the instructional days and everything is really the same, Doug, in the end, it's just, it breaks out differently depending on all those other details.
Basically, less holidays going to take place.
I, I think, I think the way that the breaks fall, like if you get a longer winter break, for example, versus a shorter one, a lot of that depends on where actually the Christmas holiday celebration falls. So it's those sorts of contingencies. I didn't really answer your question, but the big answer is it depends, but nothing is impacted as far as our instructional programming goes.
Just eight days seems like an awful lot, so it seems like something has got to be eliminated. Eight, eight days around Christmas is about the entire Christmas break at this point in time.
Our, our committee is bound by sentry code, so we, you know, we follow the, the rules and regs there, so it, it'll work out in the end. I can walk through it with you if you'd like what we're looking at.
If, if we tentatively approve 23, 24, I'm assuming that tentatively means that you will be back here next spring to get final approval on those.
Yes, and we need to ensure the blackout dates are part of that as well, so. I think, I think moving forward, there's potential for us to take a look at through policy, whether or not we look at a two-year calendar, just because families like to plan ahead around things and I think that would be positive for our community.
And the, the blackout numbers, are we approving the blackout numbers for 22, 23? Or are we actually approving, you want us to prove the actual dates that they're blacked out on that calendar?
Yeah, the dates that they're blacked out, there's a range of blackout dates that can be requested by the different levels and the, the teachers and administrators work collaboratively to come up with the, the right number there.
And I've totally forgotten if we have a motion and a second on this yet, so. We don't, okay. Any further clarifying questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve this? We have a motion by Mr. Douthat, do we have a second? Second by Doug. Any, any further questions? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. And now the only, the next thing, the only thing that's more exciting than the district calendar is policy review, Dr. Shab, it's on electronic pages 94 through 147.
I have more pages Catherine than you. All right, so we've got some policies tonight. The first one is a first reading, we've got some first readings here. I want to make a few comments about FCC restraint or seclusion policy. You'll see that Cindy did a great job with her notes, but we are bringing this back even though we had approved it. And so there's so many substantial, substantial changes on this one, this will be a first reading. So I'd make a motion to approve restraint or seclusion policy as amended.
Do we have a second? Second by, by Mr. Douthat. Further questions or comments? So the motion is to approve FCC, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Next one is also a first reading due to the same reasons. It was Tracy Gents who had a chance to, to re-review this and really go through it, so you'll see there's a lot of substantive changes to that. So I'd make a motion to adopt DEBH, employee use of social media as amended.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Bill. Further questions, comments? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Next one is ACBF, medical marijuana as written. This is the first time you've seen it. I'd make a motion to accept medical mari- marijuana as written.
Do we have a second? Second by Doug. Further questions or comments on medical marijuana policy? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Make a motion to accept FDA education of homeschooled students as written. This replaces our former policy 6112.
Do we have a second? Second by Bill. Questions? None. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
I'd make a motion to accept FAC-A placement and adjustment of transfer students as written.
Do I have a second? Second by Doug. Any further questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Next one is curriculum design and evaluation. I'd make a motion to approve GAA.
Do we have a second? Bill seconds. Further questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Next one is selection and adoption of instructional materials, GAAD, and I wanted to make a comment about this, it's on page 120 of your electronic com- packet. You'll see that we eliminated that the superintendent shall bring all instructional material recommendations to the board for final approval. Since we weren't doing that, I don't think we want to be in the place of, the, the second thing that we struck is including library material, having each title brought forth to the board for approval. So that is struck and I, I think that that's important for us to know as a board. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Douthat. I think the other thing is that we, we noticed in the, in the first sense, it says the Grand Forks Public School Board is legally responsible for all matters relating, so it already says that, that from a legal standpoint, we are there, so. Further clarifying questions? Go ahead Amber.
Just because this is like a hot button topic right now, does this sort of protect the district in terms of them being the stopgap to determine requests for, you know, if anyone wanted to remove a library top book or something like that? Because a lot of what boards are dealing with now is that they're coming to the board, say, we want you to take this out of the school system and then it's on the board.
We have, we have a process in place and I don't know if one of the three superintendents wants to outline that at, at all, but we have a process in place for that, a committee.
Yep, that's pretty much the summary version of it, is there is a process, a formal process in place that entails a comprehensive committee review and that sort of thing.
In fact, it happened to me over the weekend and I referred it to, I referred it to Dr. Brenner, who referred it to the committee, so. So we have a motion and a second to approve policy GAAD, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
I'd make a motion to approve IAV Buildings and Grounds Security Plan as written.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Paul Messino. Questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign.
I'd make a motion to accept accommodations for individuals with disabilities.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Douthat. Any clarifying questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Next first reading of FGCA, searches of lockers as written, but we're seeing less and less lockers in schools, so anyway. Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Second by Bill. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Another safety one here, FGCB, searches of students and students' personal possessions as written, I'd make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Second by, by Doug. Any questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Motion to accept suspension and expulsion as amended, FFK.
Do we have a second for that? Bill, thank you. Any questions? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Hey, there's a lot here, aren't there? FGA, I'd make a motion to accept student education records and privacy as amended.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Douthat. Any clarifying questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Next one, FGDE, I'd make a motion to accept student distribution and posting of non-curricular material in school as written.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second by Bill. Any clarifying questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Make a motion to accept virtual learning because of weather or other conditions as amended. You know, the other thing I'd point out as I make this motion is that we, Cindy is putting dates when they were first accepted and then adding the dates, so, so that'll help us as we go through these. So I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Bill. Any questions? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Motion to accept patron complaints, KACA.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Doug, it's your turn. Doug, seconds? Any questions? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
I'd make a motion to accept BCAA, board meeting agenda and pre-meeting preparation as amended.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second by Bill. The only comment I want to make on that is, the only change that we're doing is, is crossing off the non-agenda items on public comments. That doesn't mean public can't comment on non-agenda items, what it means is that whether it's an agenda item or a non-agenda item, that's the time for public comments, so that's really the only change. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
To complete the second reading and adoption of the following policies as written and amended, this is one we've looked at, at before. Policy, public participation at board meetings as amended, policy BCBA. I'd make a motion to approve, I do have a comment, but I can wait for, after we get a second.
Do we have a second? Second by Doug. Back to Cynthia.
So in the current North Dakota, or the, what is it, the National School Boards Association magazine that I just got sometime Friday, Saturday, I don't remember when, there's an article in there that I think's valuable about rethinking some public comment that I meant to bring along, but I think we're all getting it. So I'd recommend looking at it because they do make some, they do make some statements about responding to the public. For example, one of the, one of the things would have been helpful tonight, like if somebody from the public has a factual question that they want addressed, there is, there are some boards that are allowing the superintendent to answer those questions. So I, I just think it's good for transparency for us to maybe take a little bit of a look. It's a, it's a, not a long article and, and just kind of look at that one. I don't remember what it's called.
We will certainly look at it, of course, we're, we're obligated under North Dakota state law to follow North Dakota state law, so, but we can look at that because that's a national article, but we'll look at it. Thank you. Further questions or comments about public participation at board meetings? And this is the second reading. Seeing no questions, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Cynthia?
And our last one tonight is to rescind the following because we've, um, need to. These are our old policies, 4144, workers' compensation policy for employees. You'll see workers' compensation does not need to be a policy. 8509, publication of agenda, we've already talked about that. So we, motion to rescind both of those to 4144 and 8509.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Mr. Manley, he seconds. Any further questions or comments? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Let's move on to item E, which is the agreement between the school two, two school districts. It's on electronic pages 148 through 152. Probably the most important thing is in the minutes, the meeting started at 5:03 and the meeting ended at 5:07. We had a four-minute meeting, so, really the, the, there, there weren't many changes to, to the agreement. First one was the joint powers agreement was put into the title of the, of the agreement and then there were some date changes. And then the only other thing that was changed and is instead of calling it a building representative, it's building liaison, so we changed representative to liaison. Those are really the only changes in, in the school dis- in the, in the joint, joint agreement and the recommendation from the committee was to approve the, the new agreement as outlined.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement for the 2022, 2023 joint powers agreement between the Grand Forks Air Force Base and Grand Forks Public School District Number One.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Manley. Further clarifying questions regarding the joint agreement? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Let's move on to item 7F, which is the appointment of district activity. is appointment of district activities director. It's on electronic pages one fifty-three through one fifty-eight. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Dr. Lund. I'm just going to stay on point and stay with my memo. On behalf of the interviewing team who interviewed three internal candidates and three external candidates for the position of district activities director on February seventh and eighth, in concert with ten observers fulfilling teaching, advising, coaching, parent and community roles, I'm pleased to recommend Mr. Michael Biermeyer for the position effective July one, twenty-twenty-two. Presently, Mr. Biermeyer is the activities director for Thief River Falls, Minnesota Public Schools, where he has served in that role for fifteen years. He comes to the district with systems thinking and a framework for and experience in establishing a balanced culture between extra and co-curricular activities. He has a proven track record of bringing athletic coaches and academic advisors together with a shared understanding that all activities are important for all participants. His references spoke highly of his interpersonal skills, his ability to engage the community, his use of data for program evaluations, and a reputation for intimately understanding and supporting fine arts programs as well as athletic programs. Below were the characteristics that we were looking for, uh, in all of our applicants, communication, vision and philosophy, relationships, program knowledge and experience, essential technical skills and leadership. And you can see some of the other attributes listed underneath each one of those headers. After much deliberation and discussion, members participating in the interviews agreed that Mr. Michael Biermeyer was the candidate who rose to the top in what was a very deep and competitive pool of finalists. Pending school board approval of his appointment, Mr. Biermeyer has agreed to collaborate with Dr. Chris Arison, Red River High School principal, and Mr. John Strandell, Grand Forks Central High School principal, on filling the two new high school athletic director positions within the next two weeks. Uh, some of you had the chance to meet Mr. Biermeyer at Central's tour this evening. I'm appreciative that he made the trip to Grand Forks. Uh, it was tied to Thief River's, I believe, girls' hockey team was playing on the east side. So that worked out well for him to be introduced to, uh, some of you who were on the tour. I'd like to point out the interviewing team you can see in the left-hand column on page one fifty-four. And there was, uh, an inadvertent omission, uh, under the observers and feedback providers. Jeff Welsh, who teaches science at Twining Middle School and is also the head Grand Forks Central Wrestling Coach, was part of that group as well. Administrative recommendation is to appoint Mr. Michael Biermeyer as the district activities director effective July one, twenty-twenty-two at a salary of one hundred thirty-two thousand fifty dollars.
Clarifying questions or comments from board members? If not, does the board have a recommendation, board, a motion to make?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, Dr. Michael Biermeyer. I believe he is, uh, I think he holds the title of, uh, doctorate in chiropractic.
He is a doctor. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by, by Amber. Further questions or comments? Seeing none? The motion is to approve, uh, Michael Biermeyer as the activities director effective July first, twenty-twenty-two. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item F, other announcements. Dr. Brenner?
I have none. Thank you.
Ms. Glatch? Dr. Lewis? Mr. Manley, got any announcements? Okay. Any announcements from board members? Okay. Let's move on to item eight B, which is board request for future considerations. Do we have any board requests?
Shorter meetings.
Shorter meetings. That's the request. We will work on that request.
You're ahead of schedule.
Yeah. Should have been on the, should have been on the inner district meeting. That was a four-minute meeting we had. So, um, uh, HC, school board norms. Mr. Delphet, how did we do?
Did a very nice job.
Okay. Well, since we're fourteen minutes ahead, I'm going to speak for fourteen minutes. We'll do the, we'll do the government way of doing. No, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Get home to your families.